I will now call back to order the City of Lake Forest, School District 64.
Dr. Montgomery, can you give that? Any other questions? All right, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Yon? Mr. Carr? Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Shohan?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Mr. Bernal? Motion carries.
The second bond issue is a resolution- ...of the district for the purposes of increasing the working cash fund of said school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Are there any questions regarding the second bond issue? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Shohan? Yes. Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mrs. Bernal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We now have an opportunity for public participation solely for issues relating to the bonds. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board regarding the bond issues? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn the public bond hearing?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
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 I will now call back to order the City of Lake Forest, School District 67 Board of Education meeting for February 25th, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bernal?
Here.
Mrs. Shohan?
Here.
Adamo?
Here.
Mr. Carrar?
Here.
Ms. Yon?
Here.
Ms. Engelberg?
Here.
Mr. Remus?
Here.
Motion carries.
I have just a brief president's report for this evening, and what I like to do at these meetings is talk a little bit about what the board is doing outside of this limited meeting environment that most people see. And one of the things that the board has been working on and focusing on a lot over the past year is, in terms of the many areas that are important, is making sure the students that are progressing through 67, advancing to high school, wherever that may be, including 115, are ready, and assessing high school readiness. And so, one of the things that we participated in last week was a fantastic listening session that was hosted and organized at Lake Forest High School, where we had several members of the Board of 67, current and future board members, as well as members of the other boards of education from 115 and Lake Bluff. And we had the opportunity to meet with students, current high school students at Lake Forest High School, and ask them questions about what their experience was like. Are they ready for high school when they start at Lake Forest High School? If they aren't, in what ways aren't they ready? What would they like to see improvement? And it was just a really fantastic exercise. We're still collecting and synthesizing that data, but what I can say is, it was extremely affirming in a couple ways, because, one, the people, the students, that we met with were just incredibly just bright, intelligent, articulate people who had tremendous insight. And they also had very valuable contributions that were helpful to me as a board member, understanding what we need to focus on. And it was affirming because we, some of the things that they commented on, and these are students, some of which are current seniors, so they left 67 a few years ago, that they said, "I wish I would have had a little more help in this area," in the areas that we're already working on. So it's good to hear that we're on the right path, and also hearing some new ideas there, where there's perhaps work for improvement in the future. So, high school readiness is something that the board is focusing on, the administration as well, and so it was a really great opportunity to hear from those high school students last week. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Montgomery for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, kind sir, and I do talk about, with some pictures, on the event that you just talked about with the board mixer, so I'm glad that you brought it up because it was a wonderful event. The first thing I'd like to draw your attention to is, earlier tonight in the workshop, excuse me, it's actually in the finance committee, the board heard the results from the annual financial audit, and I am pleased to report that, once again, District 67 received an unmodified, clean opinion from our auditing firm, and this is the highest assurance an auditor can give the district. I want to congratulate Dr. Hermes and her team for their outstanding financial stewardship. This happens year after year, and it should not be taken for granted, so I want to congratulate Jen and thank her for her leadership, because this is truly best-in-class, and I want to make sure that we are celebrating those successes. Today, Jordan and the team met with the District 67 Technology Working Group. This was a new idea that we created in a partnership with the community to talk about how we are using educational technology within the classrooms. One of the big findings from this working group is that there will be changes next year, particularly in the K-4 arena with iPads, in that we will not be having iPads going home in grades K through 4 next school year. And they won't, so it won't be over the weekend, it won't be in the evenings, they will stay in the classroom. The committee also talked about their pilot around Securly, which is an in-home monitoring opportunity for our parents to monitor devices. This is an outreach to try to level up the support we're offering for our parents. Right now, we have 105 students enrolled in the parent pilot, and we are hoping that after spring break, we will be making this widespread to parents. This will continue, likely continue, next year, but remember, without the students taking the iPads home K to 4, it will be primarily focused then in our grades 5 through 8, where the devices will still come home during the school day, excuse me, after school hours. Moving forward, at tonight's meeting, later in the meeting, there is a recommendation for the board to accept bids on the rendering, or excuse me, the improvement for the DPM cafeteria. Many of you know that the Spirit of 67 graciously donated about $300,000 worth of new furniture to transform the DPM cafeteria, well ahead of when we were going to make improvements to the physical structure. A commitment to the Spirit was that, in the summer of '25, we would remodel the cafeteria itself, and that's the renderings that you're seeing in front of you today. The furniture in the picture is the existing furniture. So this is one rendering. We added some elements that may be new to the community. There is a grabbing-go counters that we have added, there's actually two of them, this is just one side, so it'll be a 7, 8, 5, 6 side. Quest came to the workshop tonight and talked to the board and told them their vision about how they are planning to utilize the new space. And then, I'm especially excited about the DPM hub, which was the tech office, and previously, in years gone by, actually a teacher lunchroom, that is largely unused at this point, it was used for storage. And it will be transformed, there will be another serving area in the back, there will be windows that open as a nano-wall that will open into the cafeteria, flexible seating, and you can do small group areas here, I think the students will like it. And it would be almost a reward area. It'll feel more like the cube for our students to make the environment a little bit more welcoming. As Mark shared, we had a wonderful turnout for the joint board mixer. We gained a lot from parents and from students, I will not belabor this because he yelled about it, but we're proud of this event and want to thank Dr. Lennart for her leadership. The biggest thing that I would add is that, as we synthesize this data, my priority is, well, now what, so what? So we want to make sure that it's actionable, so each of the board members who attended received a form to fill out for trend data. Then, each table of the student interaction, there was a note taker, and that data is being synthesized. And then, there were note takers within the parent room, also collecting notes. So, Dr. Lennart is going to need about a month to process all of that, but please stay tuned for key takeaways and findings and next steps. There was a joint board coffee in February, February 6th, and we had about, I don't know, 12 or 15 people there. It was a wonderful conversation. Sometimes we come and there's zero people, sometimes there's 20, this time there's like 12 to 15, and it was, this is a time where you can, the community can go in 1,000 different directions, whatever they want to talk about, and it was a great conversation in February, and I want to thank Mark for his leadership and his partnership. The next opportunity is on April 17th, and this is just reaffirming our commitment to community outreach, and I'm going to talk about some of those ideas here, in that we also had the Superintendent Advisory Council meeting last week, and you can see pictures from that meeting. It was a, this meeting was really focused on what they wanted to talk about, which I appreciate the candor they offered and the guidance and the support that this group has. Remember, this is about 25 community members who applied, there were 75 that submitted applications. Mrs. Oakley helped create a cross-section of our community. Each person serves on a two-year term, and then, we will, we're trying to figure out, are we replacing them all at the two-year mark, or are we going to stagger to bring some type of historical perspective? I don't know if a 67 board member has ever, have ever invited you into those, I know that John Noble came to present on one topic, perhaps at the next meeting, we'll invite one of you, just so you can hear what they're saying and sharing. I think Mr. Noble found that beneficial. You can ask him too, so maybe he didn't, but I think he did. Some other community outreach, on February 3rd, we're doing an annual presentation to the newcomers club, we did it last year, and February 3rd was this year's. We also have this week, I think Thursday of this week, we have our reliter and Chamber of Commerce presentation with Dr. Lee Ali. Both of the first two, Dr. Lee Ali and I co-present, and it's always wonderful to have Lisa, and share the stage with her and hear about the wonderful things that are happening in '65. Remember, we are committed to the partnership between the three districts, that was a major focus when I was onboarding four years ago now. We also do an annual, or I also do a presentation to Lake Forest Place, and that's an annual event now, and that's going to be on April 4th, to go into the community and have those representatives of the community and residents be able to interact with me, give an update, and then also hear what's top of mind for them. There's two upcoming book talks that I'm especially excited about. The first one is Ellen Galinsky, and that's in a partnership with the District 67 APT All District Meeting at Croya. Ellen is, now I can, I think I can call her a friend, I interviewed her a year ago, and we've worked on a couple things together at the national level. The book is, I should warn you, the Lake Forest Book Store has both of these books, the library also has both of these books. Ellen's book is about this thick, it is, she did not use a Cliff Notes version. It is years of research, actually nine years of work on this, and it's really talking about the breakthrough years, which is 10 to 25, and it was enlightening to me as a parent and as an educator, I think it's very much worthy of a read. Come and listen to her and engage, and she's also spending time with our students. The night before her speak, she's going to interview students and then share what she found from the students in relation to what the national trends are, and I think that's a wonderful add-on to make it more personal. Doug Bolton's book is not out, I have a galley version of it right now, I was reading a little bit last night before bed, and it is called Untethered. Both of these books are talking about how we are supporting young people as adults. I think parents and guardians in the community are searching for answers, just like we are as educators, especially in the face of a mental health crisis, where 53% of our females on a national level are experiencing anxiety and depression, 3 out of 10 are having suicidal ideation, and that's both males and females, and 2 out of 10 are actually committing some type of self-harm. So when you think about, how are we supporting the young people within our households? These two authors help level up and give you more tools in the toolbox, whether you're an educator, a parent, an aunt, uncle, grandparent, please spread the word, because I'm excited about these, and I think it'll help. On a much lighter note, but equally exciting, we had our DPM spelling bee on January 22nd, and there were, it took 45 rounds to select the winner. This is definitely not for me, I think I'm getting more dependent on electronic spell-checking, but 45 rounds for these young people, so we had Dimitri as a sixth grader, as well as Lucy as a sixth grader, forgive me, we also had Leila as a fifth grader, intentionally leaving off the last names at this point, eighth grade, we had Luke and Joey. We, this is the first time in DPM history where we had to go to the secondary list, and the results were, second place was a sixth grade Lucy, and our school champion was eighth grader Joey, who will attend the regional spelling bee in March for the second year in a row. I had the word, the word was boar, B-O-A-R, B-O-A-R, I did it, thank you, I had to practice it in the mirror, and I took it down there because I didn't think it was a very complicated word, but at that point, they had went through so many incredibly difficult words, that was the last one that Joey spelled correctly to win it all. So, I want to congratulate everyone that participated, and it brings a little joy to my heart to know that spelling bees are still important, and we're still engaging in that practice. That concludes my report, and I thank you for your attention. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. These are young people celebrating the Sheridan Playground, and the picture just brings me joy.
It must have been today, it looks nice and warm. Any questions for Dr. Montgomery? All right, tonight we have three opportunities for public participation. The first, we already had for bonds. The second one now is just for items on tonight's agenda. So at this point in the evening's agenda, this opportunity for public comment will be limited to comments about this meeting's agenda items only. Please hold all other comments until the following opportunity for public comment later during tonight's meeting. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board regarding the items on the agenda for this evening? Nope. All right, next up, I believe Dr. Fitzsimmons is going to talk about the winter assessment.
Thank you so much. We are excited to be here, and I am honored to be presenting with this amazing team. We have the teaching and learning team, with also some of our coaches and colleagues from our Department of Student Services. So I'd like to just very quickly introduce, we've got Mrs. Keizer, Vale Keizer, we've got Mrs. Ford Helverson, Joanne, we've got Jenny Parkhurst, who is our math coach, Denise Galatzianos, who is our literacy coach, we also have Sam Paulson, who is the DPM principal on the west side, and then in the back, we've got Molly. So, thank you so much for being here with us, I am excited to work with these friends, as well as share and celebrate them. I'm celebrating them as much as our students, I am excited to share the data in this report tonight. So, without further ado, we can click through our next slide. And one of the things I want to highlight, one of the things we will be talking about tonight, we're going to be going through some of the strategic plan and academic metrics, reframing that, and this is also a board priority. We're also going to be looking at the NWA map by school, as well as the ECRG growth metrics. So the ECRG growth metrics really are going to show an overarching growth measure, high growth, low growth, expected growth, and this is taking from all of our benchmarking, which we call FastBridge, and Vale is going to dive a little bit more into FastBridge, as well as the map from our winter, based on previous years and the projected or estimated expected growth. We'll also talk a little bit more about our action plans, because you are going to see some celebrations, but you're going to see, through our triangulation of those different data points, you're going to see that we have highlighted areas that we still need to continue working on. And then, last but not least, we're going to hear from Joanne Ford-Helverson this evening on the work with the Special Education Continuum, simply because we have been charged with this, seeing that some of our students with the highest needs are not growing at the rates that we would expect. So in moving on, I did want to just, oh, could you go back one, Vale? Just to see, I've circled the NWA map and the ECRG growth and the FastBridge, because those are three different data points. I'm trying to work through this year in creating an understanding around what each one of those does. I think in the past, we've selected one or another to highlight in an assessment, the key is to look at all of them. They do different things, and you can't extrapolate one and tell a story. You really need to look at all of them, they tell you different things. Some will dive into the curriculum, so you can look at standards and strands and inform instructional decisions. Others will give you highlights on, mm, we are not growing here. Others will actually show specific skills that we need to target in order to boost those standards on the test. But the key here is triangulating all of them, so that we can see trends, that we can move our district forward. And I'm excited to say that I think that we have some good information from where we're at, all the work we've been doing in the action plans, but even more importantly, I can, we can see where we're succeeding and where we still need to dive deeper to get some answers. So, the first thing, we just want to remind you, Vale, do you want to just talk a little bit about our metrics?
Yeah, so just back to our strategic planning and our metrics that we set as a community, we really talked about our growth in MAP as well as FastBridge, so we're going to highlight a little bit of that later today. The ECRG growth that we have really focuses a lot on the MAP piece, so we wanted to also make sure that we had an understanding of how we're doing with our foundational skills as well. So we'll be back there. And just as a reminder, when we set these goals, really thinking about, we are a high-achieving district, high-performing, we are in currently, from the IAR lens, in the 93rd percentile for ELA, as well as the 96th percentile for MAP, or math, so celebrations.
Okay, so getting started, if we want to take a peek at our first set of data, we have Cherokee reading. So let me just take an extra moment to explain what these bars mean. If you look at the very top bar, what you see is you're seeing the growth for this year. That's a specific growth measurement. The growth measurement we are looking at are the green and the blue bars. So the top is pure growth. The green and the blue bars indicate the number or the percentage of students who are scoring in the 61st to the 100th percentile. So we want to be in those green and those blue bars. The green stands for the 61st to the 80th percentile, and the blue means that those are students who are scoring in the 80th percentile. So this, I just want to clarify, this is not proficiency. This is different than what you see on the IAR state test, this does not mean a percent of students who are proficient. It means students who are in that top echelon, and this is compared nationally. So, what I've chosen to show you tonight, if you go to the achievement bar, which is the second bar, Vale's pointing right there, that whole line there, that whole line on that second row, is essentially achievement from comparison, from winter of 22, 23, 24 to this past winter, 24, 25. So what I would love for you to take a look at, and Vale, if you can just circle the green and blue on the, on last year's achievement, compared to the green and the blue of this year's, what you are going to see is that we have actually increased the number of students who are scoring in the highest echelon, the highest percentiles. In Cherokee reading, we have Cherokee students going last year from being, in 50% of our students scoring in that highest echelon, to this year, 56% of students scoring in the highest echelon. You can also see in those two bubbles that it's, do you see the two bubbles where it says 60, and then the other green one, which says 68? Those are median percentiles. So what that means is that if you lined up every single score of every single student at Cherokee, the median, the very middle score last year was ranging in the 60th percentile of the nation. And this year, they are now in the 68th percentile, which is in that green band of success. So this is a huge celebration for Cherokee, and we, it is one metric to show how we're comparing nationally. Now, if you go down to the next slide, I'd like to give a shout-out to our fourth-grade teachers, they are not here tonight, I invited them to come, but they were not able to come. This was a huge shift for them. They actually went from 48% of their students scoring in the green or the blue, to 66% of their students scoring in the green or the blue, and that's essentially moved them up from falling in the 60th percentile last year, and this year, you'll see the 72nd percentile as their median distribution score. So a huge celebration. One of the things, I don't know if Denise or if Jenny, well, this is Denise, so this is ELA, maybe Denise, you'd like to share two of the main interventions that they did this year?
So one of the things that we did this year was, we came together, sorry, can you hear me now? Is, early on in the year, we took a look at our data from last year, from spring, and looked at our initial fall data, and we identified areas of focus in terms of the skills that we want to prioritize. And then, from there, as a team, we've been working together with the building coach and the administration, to really look at in an authentic way, how we can, within our core resource, identify where those skills are taught, and how we can make sure that we're prioritizing those, and then checking that progress along the way. So that's been- So that's been a really nice way for us to authentically embed those skills within our core resource, but also think about how we can continue to engage students. What else would you add to that? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise. And one of the other things to mention is that they have embedded some interventions to target some of those phonetic and grammar skills that weren't being addressed before, like LLI and six-minute reading. So we're really proud of the, the unique interventions that have been delivered universally as well as to the students who needed it. Now, what I'm going to do, I wanted to give a big focus here on Cherokee because I know that we are concerned, but what I do want to make sure that we do is go through all of the schools, but I won't spend as much time on each of the schools unless there's something to note. So please feel free to write down some questions, and you can ask when we're finished with the presentation. But moving on to Everett, we have Everett, who moved from 64% to 70%. We have Sheridan, who moved from 69% to 77%. We have DPM, who moved from 65% down to 57% on the East Side. And we have DPM West, who moved from 59% to 67%. What I would like to do, though, is go back up one slide to East, and then if you can take it down to the next slide, Vale. I added in an interesting data point for us to note. DPM East, again, we're looking at a lot of different data points. I just mentioned that DPM East dropped from 65% of our students falling in that upper echelon to 57%. But one of the things I noted was that if you look at ELA, which is on the right, last year, the average RIT score, which is a Roush unit, and that's essentially the best way to describe that, it's just a measurement scale to evaluate student achievement and growth on the NWA map, the 23, 24 and the 24, 25 RIT score on average was the same. So what that did tell us is that the nation was moving and growing at a faster rate than our fifth grade. So that is one of our data points we're triangulating to make, make us see that something's going on. So moving on to the reading, as I said, DPM West, we have 59% of our students falling in that upper echelon to 67%. So nice growth. If we move on to math, we have Cherokee, who also had some incredible growth in math. Again, last year was 59% of the students, moving to 67%. Again, growth, we're in a much better place this year. Everett, 69% to 75%. Sheridan did have a little bit of a decline. They went from 84% last year of all of their students being in green and blue down to 76. And we talked to Susan, and one of the things that she said in math is that there's a cohort that came up from first grade that was their neediest grade, and it's a cohort that has come up to be in second grade, and this is their first data point that they're collecting. So this is also part of their SIP plan, their school improvement plan, and they're targeting those high-need students, the small groups of students that are not growing the way we would like. So I just wanted to let you know that we are also on this and aware of it and have action plans embedded. Moving on to DPM East math, we have an increase, actually. Last year, we had 62% of DPM East students in the higher echelon. This year, up to 67. So that was an increase of five percentage points. And then DPM West, wow, we want to celebrate DPM West. And I'd love for Sam to just say a couple of words. We've got DPM West moving from 69% in that blue and green all the way up to 79% of those students in the highest echelon of the nation. And, and if we can move one more slide to highlight on eighth grade, wow, 74% of those students in green or blue, up to 85%. So Sam, if you'd like to just say a few words on the success of your team?
Yeah, just extremely proud of the work we've been doing. Really, our focus this year has been disaggregating data as early as we can and then looking at the trends in our students who aren't growing at the rate that we would hope they would be, and then really intentionally designing instruction to help pull them up as well. So continuing to target those who are exceeding, and then how can we extend beyond where they're at? And then truly, the notion of meeting kids where they're at and trying to pull up our students who might be plateauing or not growing as well. And I'd like to say the proof is in the pudding. It's, it's working, and we're very proud of that. And it's something that we're going to continue to try and bring down to lower grades as well, where we obviously see fifth grade is an area we need to put some more emphasis on, but developmentally, they're at a different point than our eighth graders. So how can we make it still something that provides them that same lift and then work towards the high school readiness that we were all talking about at the beginning of the meeting?
Thank you. And I'll share one more slide on the overall growth. If we go down to the next slide, Vale, this is an ECR overview of the growth. So one of the things you can see, it's kind of hard to see all these numbers, but your eye goes to the yellow, right? The yellow circle there, because what that's saying, if you break this down by school, and we can go deeper, this is in the actual assessment report, the deeper data points. This is just, again, another triangulation point for us because it's pointing to some of the areas that we don't have as much growth. And what this measure is, this is about the scores that cohorts had last year, the trends according to the local growth model, and then the projections that ECR, our data tool, is telling us that our students should be growing at. So this we look very deeply at, and Vale, I don't know if you can just kind of circle the low-growth column. Those are the numbers that we look at very intensely because those numbers are telling us what percentage of our students aren't growing the way we expect them to grow, and not just nationally, but locally. So because it's locally, that's giving us a motivation and an intentionality to say that we're not keeping up with our local peers. And in the fall, you remember, I showed you the peer comparison model? These are the things that we're looking at. So this yellow is not the be-all, end-all of all data points, but combined, you can see that we have our area of focus. So I am going to turn it over to Vale and the rest of the team to share some of the work that we're, we have one more data point to look at, and that's the FastBridge scores, where some of our attention is going, and then overall, what this means and what we're doing for the rest of the school year.
Thank you. So the only other thing I'd like to add to that about ECR is that we're really encouraged to look at this as a formative data piece. So it's not spring, right? We still have a lot of time with an instruction. So the really nice piece about having winter is that we're able to make action happen, and that's exactly what our teams have been doing. So I'll highlight some of that in just a couple minutes. But first of all, we wanted to just address a little bit about one of our, our goals as, as a community and what we're looking at for our foundational skills. When we started our reading review those years ago, we recognized a need for our literacy practices to change and to really focus on current research. One of the commitments we made was looking at how we are reducing the amount of students in the high-risk or some risk category and really looking at our spring-to-spring data. So I recognize it's winter right now, but I wanted to show you what that looks like. This was in the assessment report. But we're seeing a nice trend line showing the decrease over time, that when we get to the spring for our kindergarten and our first-grade students, we have had a nice steady decline, and that's a good thing because that means there's less kids that are in those high-risk pieces. That tells us that the curriculum that we're using, our resource that we have in place, as well as our interventions that we're putting in place for kids is working. So that's exciting to hear. So action plans, we want to talk to you a little bit, too. There is so much we could say tonight about the level of intention that's been put into the work. I am really proud of the team that I have worked with on all of this. It has been truly a village because every single person has put their hand in and said, "Let's go." It is all about our students and our outcomes and making sure that we're helping students succeed, which has been great. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that, and I think it goes back to, just to remind our community about our commitment to our strategic plan and how that is really being carried out through each of our schools' individual school improvement plans. We can look at our district-level data. It really does take our schools digging into, what does this look like for the students we serve at Cherokee, at Sheridan, at Everett, at Deer Path? So all of that has been really beautifully aligned. I think the alignment this year more than ever has been wonderful. We really kicked off the school year knowing what our projections were going to be and understanding where we needed to focus the time and attention. The other piece that we've talked about a little bit this year is our, just our distributed leadership model. We do have, you know, lots of folks in positions, administrators, coaches, our building leadership teams, our, our department chairs. What we've really tried to do this year is elevate those positions and think about how we can build the capacity of our leaders to support student outcomes so that it's not just coming from our administrators. It's, again, leadership really coming together and thinking about what these action plans look like. So I did want to highlight that because it has been a tremendous amount of work. You know, all of our building leadership teams and coaching teams are looking at the data with a laser-like focus. Our instructional coaching, so a lot of this is really how we have partnered with our district coaches and our building coaches and our administrators. I think the way I'd like to think about it is that there is so much data that exists that what we're not asking our teachers to do is to become the experts on absolutely everything. That's what we have this other layer of leadership for, and what we're able to do is to bring that data to our teams, really zoom in, and then we can spend our time not just trying to figure out what does this data mean, but actionizing what the next steps are. So how have we done that? Would have been some of the high-leverage pieces, things that we've done. More than ever, and I know we've talked a lot over the past couple of years about standards focus, but really, our accountability to students and to our state is, is on the standards. It's not the resource itself. We are in a spot right now where we have really robust resources in place for our content areas. What we're able to do now is really think about our, our instructional practices in the classroom, thinking about the historical trends of our data. So when I talk about data-driven standards focus, what we've been able to do, especially for some of those areas where we continue to see the trends that we don't want to see, is we've looked at historically about five years' worth of IAR data, and we've tried to look at to see what are the gaps that exist. Because what we know is that the resource doesn't necessarily have everything in it. So what we have to do as a team is really think about what are other opportunities that we can layer in there. Another piece is that we have become even more focused on how do we further differentiate within the classroom? How are we using our resources? So at the elementary level, this is called extended learning. We have that for K through 5, actually. And then what I need for 6 through 8. That's an intervention time where we're able to address the needs of not only students who need further support, but also students who are already there and we want to extend their learning. So that's a piece, too. And then something I've been really proud of, high levels of collaboration this year have been on our commitment to exposure with, with IAR. Again, our resources may not have everything in there, so what we've been able to do is think about, there are areas where we need to supplement more. We need to provide opportunities for students to see prompts that they may not see within our current resource, but that they'll see on IAR, to familiarize them, to be able to have those, those conversations and to expose them. And then as teachers, we're coming together and really looking at what are those student samples and how we can make further instructional decisions. So those are super kind of high-level pieces that we've been doing. I think the word I want us all to leave with tonight is intention. It's a lot of really intentional planning that's been happening in action for students. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joanne Ford Helverson to talk a little bit more about special education and our continuum of services work.
Thank you. So on December 20th, I believe it was, the last Ed Committee before we all left for winter break, our Department of Student Services presented to all of you about some of the deeper analysis that we were doing this fall around students with IEPs and our continuum of services. As a result of that work, the headline was, "Our students are growing, but they're not growing at a rate that is going to close the gap for many of them." And so that was really the focus and the charge that led to us creating a work group. So our next steps here, let me kind of advance. There we go. So kind of where we left with that, we have created a group. We have 11 educators that are a part of this work group. We had our first meeting about a week and a half ago, and we kicked off our work setting the, the course and the tone for that work, and we will be digging into really more clearly defining our, our services. I think we identified gaps through that analysis, and we'll be working with our team to draft out some of those additional layers and supports that we need to build into our continuum. And so we have four meetings planned between this winter and spring, and we have an iterative, an iterative process set up where we're meeting as a work group, digging into that work, and in addition to that, some of the resources and the best practices and evidence-based practices that we want to see along with that continuum of services and supports. And then we will be, as we meet as a group, then we'll circle back to our admin team to take it through a round of feedback and so forth. And by the time we get to May 20th to our Ed Committee update, we'll have something really robust, hopefully, to bring to you for additional comment and feedback. And then our goal is to, we're going to have some focus areas for next year, and what we build out this year will be set the course for implementing the change that we will see more system-wide for the 26, 27 school year. So that's a little bit of a, like a teaser for more to come for May 20th, but we're currently in that work right now, and it aligns nicely with a lot of the database conversations that we're having at the team levels as well. Thank you.
Great. And I know that we have just a couple more minutes. Thank you. This has been important work, and I know that this is a lot, but we want everyone in the community to hear this intentionality, this focus. And the headline is, "We are excited about IAR. I feel like it's game day coming up, and we are going to come in and do our best. We're excited." And so, Vale, if you want to just wrap up with a couple of next steps and questions?
Yeah, and I think we're excited, and I can speak for our teachers, I believe, as well, the level of excitement because of all of the work that, that we've been doing. Thank you to our teachers. I think that we can't say that enough. They're on the ground floor, working with our kids every day. So next steps are, we have IAR coming up. This year, we have a new platform that we're working with, so we're doing some training coming up in the coming months, but that will be in April, and we're partnering just for how we can help support the messaging for our students to get really excited. It's a show what you know kind of piece. We will have our MAP spring testing later in the spring as well. And then one other piece that we have been talking about with some different groups in the district have been our suite of assessments. So really, I think we've kind of started that conversation here, are the assessments we're offering the right assessments? So we've talked about that with our teachers. We brought that to CCC, and then we will be kind of making some other recommendations about if the assessments and the timing of them are the right ones for us moving forward.
So we would love to open it up to any questions you may have, but again, I would like to just thank this entire team. We've got our coaches, Jenny and Denise, here to answer any questions. Molly's here as well. Please ask away, but thank you to this amazing team, to the teachers, and to the students who are doing all the work.
Yes, Carl.
I'll defer to anybody else who wants to go first. All right. Could you go back to, I think, slide three? It's our strategic priorities. Oh, it's going to be a while. There you go. So this, this is a great metric, state assessment metrics, and I really appreciate all the hard work that everybody's done, and we are trending exactly the way that we want to. But I just would like you to focus on this, and I guess I'd ask you, Matt, too. We need to adjust this because we're already at where our goals were for five years from now. So something that needs to be adjusted where it's a better metric for us to, to track. To me, if it's a reach goal, that's fine, but whatever it is, it needs to be something a little bit better that, I think the wording in there maybe was a just misunderstanding of how we put it together. So maybe it's something we could work on. If you could recommend something in the future to adjust this one, that might be good for the future boards.
Yeah, I know you've brought this up before, and it certainly did not go unnoticed. The hope is that we will have a recommendation for you over the summer so we can make the change in August because we should have something that's really showing a growth. And if we're already meeting it right now, we need to reestablish it.
Otherwise, this is, I mean, it's a great story. We're, we're doing very well. It's just the, how, how else can we track it? But I do have a question for you. So again, obviously, things are working. We're trending up the right direction. Our math and our ELA are all progressing the way they are, the way that we wanted to. So you're meeting the board's goals, but I guess my question is, are we creating issues anywhere else? Is science now lacking because it's less time? Is art or any other, other sections, are they now lacking or are they struggling because we're putting so much time in these other block hours? I don't know who that goes to, but...
Yeah, well, I think I can answer from the terms of, one of the pieces that we know with our schedule change last year with science is that we reduced the minutes there at, at middle school. That is something that the team has been problem-solving and making sure that they're thinking about how they're fitting in those inquiry units and the innovative opportunities. I would say that, hand-in-hand with academic excellence, we've also been focusing on the innovation piece this year. So in particular, one of the pieces that we've really tried to elevate for all students is that we wanted to make sure that in addition to really robust math and literacy experiences, that all students are getting... experience with STEM as well. So within our, and I'm actually going to be sharing an update with the community shortly, probably next week, about this. But with our STEM or our science specialists at the K-4 level, we've introduced SAM Labs this year, where all students are getting coding. We can guarantee that that's happening now, which is really exciting. They're getting those hand-on experiences. In addition, at the middle school level, our STEM teachers have been working on how to reintegrate a platform Smart Labs, which is what our STEM programming was built on before. But really thinking about those experiences we're offering. You know, from my experience in Lake Forest, we do offer such a lovely serving of different things for students, like world language, like our encore classes. Sam, I'm curious what you might add to that.
While Sam's walking up, you may remember from the fall assessment report that we had snippets of the peer comparables. And in science, we did decrease by a negative 1.8%. We went from 82.9% of our students meeting the ISA proficiency down to 81.1%. We're on it.
Just to touch on from my perspective as the principal of the middle school, I do feel it's taken up some adjustment for our teachers to rejigger their curriculum pacing to the new format. So for those who aren't aware, with our block scheduling, we have math and ELA every day 80 minutes. Science and social studies went from being every day 53 minutes to now every other day 80 minutes. So it's a slight decrease. I think it's around 70% of what they had previously. So we've been working with them, especially during our early release Mondays, our what we call our CII days. And it's truly, how can we still meet the standards that are in the NGSS, the Next Generation Science Standards, that are required by the state, and then repackage them to meet the new format? So something that the science teachers themselves have remarked to us is, they had labs that they would have to cut short due to the 53 minutes. So it's actually been a benefit that they have 80 minutes long, because they can have the more robust discussions. They can do multi-phase labs. Things that weren't previously available are now suddenly on the table that they didn't even realize would come with this change. So while, yes, the number of minutes are less, we feel that the way we're repurposing them and utilizing them in this new format is leading to deeper learning. So hopefully, when we go through the ISA again, now that we've had a couple of years under our belt with this new format, we should see us hopefully climb back up a little bit more.
Can I follow up?
Of course.
Just, did we get feedback during the interviews that we had a couple, two weeks ago, or last week, last week? Sorry. Did the students provide any feedback? Did they feel that they were prepared for some of the science curriculum? I mean, that's one of our big board priorities, to prepare them from high school. So I was kind of curious if, yes, we've decreased some of the hours and the minutes that are attached to this, but are the students truly being prepared for the challenges that come with biology, chemistry, so many other items up there at the high school level? And I was with the parent groups, so I'd kind of heard their opinions. But I know some of the other members were part of the student groups.
I'll offer two comments. One is, to be continued, because we're still collecting and synthesizing the data. And so all I had was visibility into my own personal groups. For my groups, it didn't come up. But I think some of that information's going to lag a little bit, because I think the change at DPM has only been in place for two, two years or one year?
Two, two years.
Two years. And so, for example, I was meeting with a couple seniors. That change didn't affect them. So I think, to the extent there's any effects, I think it's going to take a little while before we see it at the high school.
I did hear, Carl, I did hear some of the students at the listening session talk about that. And they did say they felt like the high school science is harder, and they didn't fully feel prepared. But I do know that our science teachers have articulated with the high school science teachers, and they almost teach above the NGSS standards. Right? I mean, they are teaching above it. They are teaching more high school-like curriculum.
Just the past couple of weeks, the Spirit generously donated PCR labs. So they're doing things like medical technology, the things that most kids are not exposed to at this age. I spent a very brief time as a chemistry major in college. The labs we have at DPM are nicer than the ones that were at U of I. And the things that they're doing are far more complicated and advanced than what most people are exposed to. So I presented at the Ed Committee a couple of months ago, and we talked about the career and technical education standards that we're going to have to build in, in order to provide pathways up to the high school. So those are the things we're actively thinking about as we talk about how we're going to truly prioritize the experiences. We want things like that, that will help our kids get things that are more unique, innovative, real life, that can provide them with that unique opportunity.
And I just wanted to add, from our little group, some of the students did mention that it was hard for them and some of their peers to focus in these longer blocks of time. And so they didn't know that they were getting the most out of it, because, I mean, some of the teachers allowed breaks, others didn't. And they were just losing focus because it was just a little bit too long, in their opinion.
And I would second that. I heard the same thing. I did also have a student mention that they didn't feel like they were prepared for science. But I don't think it was necessarily because of the content that they hadn't learned. I think it was more from an executive functioning standpoint and study skills, because it's a lot of information and it's memorization. And they don't have a lot of experience in being able to successfully do that, mass amounts of information and memorizing.
Thank you for that. We heard a lot about executive functioning last week. And we do have a plan more to come. But we're looking for ways we can get executive functioning skills to all, and starting very heavily and very focused in fifth grade.
I have a question. Joanne, you had mentioned that there would be changes in the 26 to 27 school year? I'm just wondering why that's so far out. I mean, maybe there's more to come when we hear on the Ed Committee, but that seems like a long ways away.
Yeah, that's a great question, because that seems like a long time from now when we're sitting in 2025. So our focus, so first, we need to like put the roadmap together, right? And so that's the work that we're doing right now. And we're going to come to you in May for next school year. And granted, this is IEP land. So we also need to follow everything that's written into plans right now. And so the process of change, you know, IEPs, you meet annually, one time a year. And so we are working to focus on particular areas for next year at DPM around some co-teaching, which is an existing practice, but honing in specifically on that and supporting that differently than we have before. And also some of, looking at some of the behavioral support a little bit differently across the DPM East to DPM West. The other work, we are not looking to make any major changes for this next school year, because we would have already had to have been in that place to start making those changes to roll into next year. So it's following the IEP cycle. So it's putting the structures in place, educating the staff and the system to be able to start making those decisions that will put that into play for 26, 27 on a much broader scale, if that makes sense. And some of these things are not looking to have major changes, but some of it's more refining the pieces that we already have in place. And having the decision-making be more systematic, so that we are targeting the students that the service maybe is really intended to support, and looking at other ways to support in a more systematic way. Because right now, it's so individualized at times that people are wearing a lot of different hats because of how we're managing the resources, if that makes sense. So some of it is more of how we're going to structure and systematize ourselves versus feeling a lot of changes for kids and families, if that makes sense.
Joanne, can you add where we are with the inclusive model and any potential changes that we would make, either maintaining or modifying?
Yeah, I mean, I think some of that has kind of naturally evolved just out of the needs of students. So when I talk about that we make students that are, or decisions that are individualized, we have done that. We still have, you know, 80% or more in kids, 80% or more of kids with IEPs spending 80% of or more of their day in general education. We do have a small subset of students who are spending maybe 50% of their day in special education and in general education. So I think those are the pieces that we're focused on. And granted, these are very small numbers of students. And in a small district, it is sometimes harder, because you, to take, we don't have as many students that you would create these big, robust programs and like you would in a large unit district. And so, you know, historically, the district has prioritized students being in their home school. And that has been a value. And that was like one of the big, major changes of bringing kids back from outplacement and, you know, ensuring that they are being educated alongside their neighborhood peers. I mean, we have neighborhood schools here. So at this point, we have a smaller group of students at one school that is spending more of their time outside of the school day. And that we are looking to streamline in terms of how we meet those needs with the number of adults and kind of what that looks like in that building. You know, I'm not sure we have the level of need that necessitates a building-based program that all students, you know, are referred to and go to to attend, based on the current needs we have in the system right now. But that is something that, you know, it's not out of the realm of possibility, it's not off the table. That's some of the, you know, the stuff that we're going to be talking through and thinking through in that work group. But I think the, you know, historically, there has been an emphasis on kids being in their home school. And that's sort of like the juxtaposition of being in a small district, is, do you build out very concentrated programming in one place and tell the student that they're leaving their school to attend this particular program? And those are hard decisions. Or are we able to, with the resources that we have, still meet and maintain those needs of those students? So.
And what Joanne is very eloquently trying to tap dance through is, do we make a program in one of the elementaries and force kids to move? So if we have a student that meets a certain profile in there in Sheridan, but the program is in Cherokee, do we move those students to Cherokee? And the same thing with Everett. Because right now, there is a distribution of resources that is spread across all three buildings. And is there a better way through this continuum to support those young people? These decisions will come at some cost. It may be the home school location.
Yeah. So, thank you for the question, though.
Joanne, while you're at the mic, one question for you. The special ed working group, does that involve parents? And if not, is there an opportunity there for parent feedback?
Yeah, there will be an opportunity for parent feedback. One of the ways is, we annually do a survey to all of our families with students with IEPs and 504s. And so we've been looking at, like, really heavily revamping that tool and having it focus more around this work and feedback that connects back to the work that we're doing this year. So we definitely are looking for that. I think for the parent end, like, we're not looking to vastly change some of the experience. Some of it is more, like I said, having a better roadmap for us and how we make decisions and organize ourselves, you know, with the resources that we have.
So I'm really glad to hear that you guys are looking into systematizing some of the different needs. I've always, having a child who went through the district, who was dyslexic, it's been a challenge. And I think K through 4 was specifically challenging in trying to figure out what was exactly going on, and then providing the right support. And I know that you do have some additional supports that you have added. And there was a mention of some other unique supports. Could you comment on some of those?
Specific to kids with dyslexia?
No, it was just in general. I think that you were offering kids who were falling, maybe either not reaching their growth potential, or somebody...
Yeah, just restate it one more time for me. So I think I was...
Oh, okay. Sorry. So we were talking about kids who were not reaching their growth potential and/or not reading in the percentages, or testing the percentiles that you wanted them to. And there was a mention that there were being, there were some unique supports that were being implemented and looked at. I was just wondering if there was an ability to comment on those in a more specific way.
Yeah. So I think we've done a lot of work around this in terms of, in special education, when I talked about like evidence-based practices and evidence-based curriculums, we have brought in newer resources for reading that target more, so they're more intensive programming for students at a K-1 and a second grade on up. In math, we had surveyed last year around the resources that we're using. We don't have, we have a couple of resources at the elementary level. And then at the middle school, there's a wider range, but many of those are outdated or used by people who were trained a while ago. So I think some of the pieces are, I've been working with our district math coach on looking to pilot and update some of those resources at the middle school level related to math. And we have, you know, recently, in the last two years, done a lot of intensive training and purchased materials to target students with very intensive reading needs. So I think, does that answer your question a little bit?
Yeah. I mean, I know that like with Amplify, like when we were looking at it as a curriculum, like it does really well for some of the middle. But if there, one of, some of the data showed that it didn't, you know, go low enough and it didn't go high enough. So I just want to make sure that appropriately, both of those groups are being supported in a, in a way that they all are growing. Because if you look even at where everyone was growing, we're obviously headed in the right direction. And I don't mean to, you know, not give credit where credit is due. But obviously, we want everybody to be growing where they should be. So just making sure that we have plans that are...
Yeah. So, okay, now, so to that specifically, I think some of the feedback we had heard is with the change from our workshop model to using the Amplify resource, that our co-teaching, so when we have our LBS and our general education teacher, that they were like navigating a new, a new, totally new resource. And the things that they knew to anticipate and how to adjust for students look totally different now. So we are in year two of that. And I think we have better information about where to adjust. But one of the outcomes of still like hearing from our staff that this is challenging, on the, we've been having discussions with TNL of partnering more with our district and building level coaches. And that would be on our work around engagement. And I'm folding in differentiation around that, too. So we have had, and I've come to talk to you all about this, our True North coaches that have provided support around specially-designed instruction and behavioral support. We are shifting to not as heavily use them, because I think our work needs to be more embedded with our coaches and more at that universal level to target some of those students and those needs, if that makes sense, too. So, that's a great question.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you. You fielded those questions beautifully. Thank you. And we definitely have a focus, as you can see with our school improvement plans, we are really targeting those students who aren't growing, all across. Those that aren't growing, those in the middle with universal supports, and our accelerated learners, we want to make sure that we have high growth everywhere.
Any other questions on the winter assessment? No. Thank you very much to the entire team. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you, team.
Next up, liaison reports. Mr. Adamo, do we have a report for True North?
I have an update. In December, we voted on a proposal from Glenview District 34 to withdraw from True North. All of the 18 districts in, that are members of True North have had their 60-day period to consider this. I understand a couple, just as an update, have objected. I think District 109, which is Deerfield, and the high school district in Deerfield Highland Park, both voted to object. Another, I think didn't...
65 did, too.
I'm sorry?
Lake Bluff did as well.
Lake Bluff did as well. So that is, that is, Glenview will now be forced, if they wish to withdraw from True North, to go through a somewhat complicated removal procedure involving very uncertain proceedings before the Regional Office of Education, both in Cook and Lake County. And there, it remains to be seen how that will all play out. We shall see. We shall see.
My understanding is they have every intention of continuing to progress to the next level.
I, it's, I, I agree with that. They have, their, True North is currently servicing zero of their students, and I believe they are the largest of the grammar school districts. So, you know, they have, they have gone a long way towards very clearly trying to separate themselves from True North. So I agree with you.
Any questions about True North? All right, Megan, do we have a report on Spirit?
Just that they will be hosting a paddle fundraiser, a tournament on May 10th. So there will be more information to come on that, but save the date.
All right, we have a few action items to vote on. First up, acceptance of the 2023-24 annual audit. May I have a motion to approve the 23-24 annual audit?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bernal?
Yes.
Mrs. Shohan?
Yes.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Mrs. Yon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is approval of the landscaping management services contract. May I have a motion to approve the landscaping management services contract?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Burna, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bernal?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Shohan?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Yon? Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up, the DPM cafeteria bids. May I have a motion to approve the DPM cafeteria bids?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can you please just clarify again the, the funding structure for paying for this? She's not here.
So without Jen here, I will be brief, but tell you that right now, we have been saving for this, but there are two different mechanisms that we approved, approved earlier, both the 10 million and the 5 million that will be incorporated in it. But right now, this initial cost will come out of the reserves that we have, and then it will be backfilled with the borrow of the 10 mil and the 5 mil that is forthcoming.
Okay, so we've written a check, just going to future funds?
No, we have the money, but what I'm saying is that with the $40 million of work that is on the horizon, I don't want you to be worried that the 2 million out of the reserves right now would be putting us in jeopardy of the investment of the results of the 10-year health and life safety, as well as the master facility plan. So the structures that you're seeing in a very systematic way over, since December all the way through April are to prepare us for those future borrows and the future plans. This project was well in advance of the plans that are forthcoming with the master facility, but all of this hangs together to make sure that we can stay true to the master facility plan that was presented to the board in December.
Any other questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Mrs. Shohan?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Bernal?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the notice to remedy of 10-year teacher Maria Galuzzi as discussed in the board's closed session meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Shohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bernal?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will now move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Before we have any discussion, can I ask Dr. Montgomery just give a little bit background on the Vision 2030 statement that's on the agenda?
Thank you. So the Illinois Vision 2030 statement is an updated from the 2020 version. It is a vision statement for the state. The reason I put it on the consent agenda was that I wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to support the many organizations that came together to create this and yet acknowledge that we have our own strategic plans in Port-au-Gras graduate. I think they complement each other nicely, but the organizations that came together to set the vision for the state were the Illinois Association of School Administration, the Illinois Association of School Boards, Illinois Principals Association, school business officials, and more. And the three areas that they are focusing on within this are future focused learning, which is all over our portrait in our strategic plan, shared accountability, and predictable funding. So that is the state's direction, and this is just memorializing that we are in support of the direction the state's going, acknowledging that at the local level, we are operating under our own strategic plan in Port-au-Gras graduate, as well as metrics.
Any discussion regarding the consent agenda items? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Mrs. Shohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bernal?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
FOIA requests, two of four for parents' care have been completed. Also completed FOIA request for James Francis, Lake Forest Corruption Busters, and Judith McAndrew. And then two FOIAs are in progress for Frank McCormick. At this point, the board will now have a third opportunity for public comment subject to board policy. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
Sure. January and February are very cold months in Chicago, the place we've chosen to live. Thank you to the faculty and staff who managed to successfully keep us open every day this winter, in spite of the fact that many of our neighboring districts did not. It is very much appreciated.
I was not a favorite person at the Montgomery household, but I appreciate your support. I should add, safety is a top priority, and every decision was made in the best light and of the information available, but thank you for your kindness.
The next board meeting, March 18th, 2025. And that concludes our board meeting for this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest School District 67 board meeting for February 25th, 2025?
So moved.
Second. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a vote, please? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
For you, Carl.